Good afternoon, colleagues. We're back from recess. We are resuming on second reading. We are still on the first bill from this morning, Bill number 6-37COR. We've just passed an amendment by Speaker. And now, the next person to speak, Senator Fisher, you're recognized. On the bill.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the clarification there. I would just like to reiterate, I think which is a fact, true, that there is no evidence that marijuana is a gateway to another drug, nor is there any, I think, credible evidence that it is an addictive substance. I think that those are canards that tend to derail the discussion, which just brings us around to the point that marijuana on this island is legal for medical purposes, as well as for recreational purposes. It is, in fact, legal, just like, under prescription, the consumption of Valium, Adderall, Xanax, antidepressants of all sorts. Notice that those medicines I just mentioned are all psychoactive, just like THC. Yet, we aren't in a frenzy, you know, calling down, you know, the wrath of heaven on ourselves just because we're talking about marijuana. It seems inconsistent. This does not mean that anybody would support a person coming to work that was insensate because of their consumption of Valium, or Adderall, or Xanax, or any antidepressant. Nobody supports that, and neither does anybody support someone coming to work under the influence of marijuana. Typically, in the employment situations, pre-employment urinalysis is considered perfectly constitutional, whether that be a private employer or a public employer. There's no problem with it. The problem only arises when you have random drug testing without any reasonable suspicion. So the standard, in my opinion, should be a reasonable suspicion. If you want to hire somebody, you can ask him to take a drug test, see what happens. If you do hire them, and you have no reasonable suspicion that they are on, you know, anything, any sort of drug, why in the world are we collecting their urine? What's the point of that? So, I would just, I just bring that up because of a residual hysteria about marijuana. We still think that, for some reason, in this day and age, we still think that, you know, if you're using marijuana, next thing you're going to do, you're going to be listening to jazz and music, you know, doing the hoochie coochie and so forth, you know? That is just 20th century thinking. It is not the reality of what's going on today. A reality, I can tell you that when I prosecuted many, many sailors and many, many Marines with the Judge Advocate General Corps for popping positive for marijuana use, and I can also tell you, you know, those are Department of Defense regulations and rules, but I can tell you that many young lives and careers, careers were ruined and young lives were impacted by this sort of testing, which had no impact whatsoever on their performance. So let's not overreach and try to regulate and discipline a legal activity, so much so that we're actually hurting people. With that in mind, there was a couple of questions that I wanted to ask of the author, and we had a brief discussion about this, and so I think that my friend Senator Parkinson may be able to answer the question. It's a hypothetical, and this is a hypothetical particularly with reference to paragraph F, foxtrot, and G, golf, which are found on pages two and three. And the hypothetical is this, Madam Speaker. In light of F and G, let us assume that I am an employee of the Department of Administration. I'm a Gov Guam employee. And I am suspected, reasonable suspicion, my employer has a reasonable suspicion that I have come to work and I'm under the influence of marijuana, I am stoned, and reasonable suspicion, under F and G, if required to give a urine sample, what, if any action, could the employer take against me if I did, in fact, test positive for marijuana, in light, again, of F and G?
You're asking the sponsor to yield, will the sponsor yield to the question?
And if the sponsor would like, I could explain my concern a little bit more.
Yes, sir. Could you please repeat your question? And if you would, please expound on your concerns.
Yes, sir. This is just, I guess I'm looking for assistance in how to read the bill. F says, "For purposes of drug screening in the territory of Guam, the presence of cannabis metabolites shall not be considered an illicit substance for justification of a positive drug test result." It seems that we only test today through urine, hair samples, et cetera. We only test for the presence of cannabis metabolites. Under F and G, if I do pop positive, can that evidence be used against me?
The sponsor yield.
Yes, I will yield to that question. As written, no, that information cannot be used against you as to whether or not, as a basis for denying you employment.
Okay. So, when I read F and true, or excuse me, F and G, Madam Speaker, is it a more accurate reading by me to say that F and G only apply to pre-employment drug screening?
Would sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I do. Sir, the intent of the legislation is for that to only apply to pre-employment drug screening. And if there needs to be language to reflect that, I would be more than willing to entertain that amendment and get that clarification in writing.
Okay. Sir, I would just invite you to reflect upon that. I think that that might be wise, to avoid ambiguity and confusion going forward, just to say that I'm talking about pre-employment drug testing here. So if you would consider that.
Yes, sir. I will make sure to prepare an amendment to that nature to clarify that. Thank you for that suggestion.
Yes, sir. And, Madam Speaker, if the author would submit to one more question. And that question is this: Under Sub 2, beginning on line 6, page 2, it says, "An employer required drug screening test that has found the person to be, to have non-psychoactive cannabis metabolites in their hair, blood, urine, or other bodily fluid." Is a non, well, what is a non-psychoactive cannabis metabolite? Is that a metabolite? Metabolite being the result of the body breaking down the drug. Does this, well, I'll just put it to you, non-psychoactive cannabis metabolite, what is that? Is that CBDs?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Apologies, Speaker. Yes, I would like to yield to that question. Yes, to my good friend from Epan, that is, that is in reference to CBDs and THC delta eights. So it's a strain of CBD that's currently on the market right now. And so, you know, we just wanted to put that in there to make sure that we also accounted for the, the non-THC cannabis products.
Okay. So this is not relative to THC products, or the psychoactive ones, rather, it is to CBDs and, I suppose, oils and that sort of thing.
Yes, things that would be, you know, that would constitute as CBD and not cannabis.
Okay.
As hemp and not cannabis, things of that nature.
Okay. Now, I know you're not an expert in pharmacokinetics or anything, but is it, can labs tell the difference between a psychoactive cannabis metabolite and a non-psychoactive metabolite?
Yes, I believe they can.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. I just thank you for allowing me the questions. Thank you.
Situs Mossi, Senator Fisher, on the bill. Senator Dwayne Nusier recognized.
Situs Mossi, Madam Chair. That's an interesting bill. I'm not sure how I'm going to make a final decision on it. I'm going to listen intently and closely as I have. I helped my friend get this bill on the floor simply because I believe we should have tough discussions, whether we want to make decisions like this or not. I think it's important, and we'll be doing that this session, fortunately. You know, Madam Speaker, I spent 20 years of my life in a test-designated position, and that is because I have a license, Attention to Merchant Marine Officer. It's a license that allows me the privilege of taking people under hire out on the high seas up to 200 nautical miles, and I'm responsible for their lives. I'm also responsible for their lives if I take them up to 150 feet underwater in a submersible. I have that endorsement as well. Interesting thing is, while I held this license for that 20-some years and conducted that as some of my primary employment, cannabis was illegal the entire time, to include medicinal. So, I knew, in every job, every position that I held, and every time I went and applied for a license, I knew that I could not pop positive on a drug test. Of course, everybody knew that marijuana, cannabis, was the one that was most prolific because of the fact that it lasts so long inside of your body, it sinks itself into your fat tissue and hangs out there for a while, not like alcohol, or some of the opioids, or cocaine, or other drugs, illicit drugs that generally move through your body within 24 hours. Fortunately, I never even used cannabis for that entire 20 years, so I almost volunteered sometimes to go ahead and stand in line, pee in a cup. But, you know, now, Madam Speaker, we, this legislature, the people of Guam, made a decision, made a decision, not all of us, but the majority of us, and the law became so, that cannabis is legal on Guam. We did that all the time, knowing that we were going to create this dilemma. I remember going and sitting down with HR folks at Department of Administration, saying, "How are you going to handle this?" And they looked with the befuddled look on their face and their hands up in the air and said, "We're not sure." What they did tell me is they did their research, Madam Speaker, and the research that they've done so far indicates that there is effort, whether it will ever be successful or not, scientifically, to try to derive the status of cannabis inside of your system, and I guess the half-life, or whatever life it has in your body, whether you smoked a joint two minutes ago, or two months ago. And that was how they were going to try to fashion a policy to understand the implications of immediacy. Are you smoking on the job, or did you smoke when you went to Cancun, hanging out with your friends? That's not with us right now. So the reason why I'm curious and want to continue to listen and might possibly vote for this bill is because, you know, the government giveth, the government take it the way, right? You give permission, but then you make it punitive. How does that work? Why? I identify with the retiring Speaker on a number of the discussions he had. You know, we don't see someone extremely happy at work one morning and go, "Hmm, want to come and talk to me? You want to go test for Adderall? You seem to be in a really good mood today." And they could have taken five or six of them beyond their prescription and be completely inebriated at work. That's a decision I guess we could make arbitrarily, if it fit with our policy. But that's what we've done. So we've got to expect the responsibility for what we've done. When we create laws, it has consequences. The consequences are going to be, you've now made something perfectly legal, just like going to the store tonight, buying a six-pack of beer, like we've talked about here, having a doctor prescribe you medications, all the other things that are out there that have an opportunity to make you impaired, whether you're operating a motor vehicle, or whether you're making key decisions on the legislative floor, signing bills and passing budgets and signing budgets at the governor's office. Six of one, half a dozen of the other. It's the same. So, we really have to contemplate that when we create laws that have consequences, and we decide to be disparate in how we're going to address that, that has to be an issue before us. We can't ignore that. And that's why I also agree with the demonization, because the demonization should not be attracted to the substance, should be attached to the behavior, because we can abuse anything. So I'll listen with quiet contemplation as the balance of the conversation goes on on this issue. But I will also say, you know, we have a lot of responsibility to take for the actions that the government does, and how we measure the disparity on what is to be punitive and what is to be permissive. I hope someday that science does have a breakthrough, and they could say, "Chris, I guess you decided to join your friends on that vacation, and looks like you consumed two weeks ago." Or, "Hey, buddy, your appetite was really good this morning. Looks like you might have just had a puff before you walked in the door." I'm looking forward to that day. Maybe we wouldn't even be discussing this anymore, because we could measure it just like we measure everything else, in terms of what are the standards, what is acceptable, in terms of a person's condition under any influence while in the workplace. I will say, I am happy, because I know this is going to exist no matter what, just like the federal government was able to tell people that they had to get the COVID shot if you were in the military. The military and the federal government is never going to make an exception, and we've got to be cognizant of that. Until that substance is changed in terms of its status, until cannabis is changed in terms of its status, which Brandon's working on right now, the bottom line is, is that it's always going to be that situation. And it's always going to be where we're not going to be able to tell the folks, you know, up there at Anderson, or down at Navy, or anywhere else, especially if they also have construction crew and everything else with all this buildup. We're not going to be able to tell them that, you know, how they're going to extradite their policy. They're going to make that decision on their own. So it looks as though the good author's taken that in consideration and understands there's parameters. But at least it's a start. It's a start to say, "Hey, guys, we made a law. What are we going to do?" Because right now, there's really only one group of people that has a situation on their hands whereby when they're tested and they pop hot, it could have absolutely nothing to do with their condition in that workplace at the time that they were ordered, whether as they're a test-designated position, or accident or incident, or anything to the like. That's the consequence of what has happened. And I admire at least the fact that a colleague advisor ours is taking a stab at it. We'll see what happens. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to share a few of my thoughts on Bill 6-37.
Situs Mossi, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? On the bill? Vice Speaker?
On the main motion of Bill 6, Speaker Trelawney, I will recognize you at this time.
Situs Mossi, thank you. I have no objection to the intent of the bill, which is going to exempt, I mean, make it consistent that if it's legal to, recreational marijuana is legal, you should not be prohibited from being employed for that. However, the intent of the bill also seems to say that employers shall still be able to discern and prohibit workers who are impaired. And, so I think we agree on the intent. The issue is just like what the discussion has been this morning, it's really just the words, and if our bill is really tight enough, and the words, so that we are, we are reaching that intent. Because as described by one of the earliest questions, this bill will, it looks from the face of it, and it's intended to apply to all employers, government of Guam and every employer on Guam. And then we came in, that they will, that employers will no longer be able to rely on kind of this, the current testing that we do for marijuana, cannabis, or the drug tests, the current drug tests, test for marijuana, and our current executive order for the Gov Guam employees says that despite the law that permits recreational marijuana, or that according to the executive order, employees under the influence of drugs or alcohol are less productive and efficient and make poor work decisions. The government of Guam's employees, including those in autonomous agencies, should be held to the highest degree of accountability because of the trusted nature of public service. The government of Guam maintains a drug and alcohol-free workplace. This policy includes refraining from otherwise legal substances, including cannabis and tobacco, while in government of Guam workplace facilities and while otherwise on duty. Now, therefore, notwithstanding the enactment of Public Law 355, the government of Guam's drug-free workplace program shall continue to prohibit the use of marijuana, and drug testing will continue to include testing for marijuana use. Number two, law enforcement personnel continue to be prohibited from consuming cannabis products, and shall continue to the same standards as was established prior to the enactment of Public Law 355. And, so, even in this executive order, I guess if I could just pose a question to the sponsor, my first question would be, is the, what intent is the bill made to have on the executive, the current executive order for government of Guam employees? Which currently prohibits, yeah, cannabis, tobacco, and allows testing for marijuana?
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Parkinson, will you answer the question?
Yes, ma'am. I'll yield to the question. The intent is the same as it's always been, is that we do not want to penalize responsible cannabis use in an employee's free time, and I absolutely stand on punishing and doing everything we can to prevent on-the-job use. There is a clear distinction between personal use with this bill and on-the-job use. This bill in no way defends on-the-job use. This is strictly protections for employees for what they do in the sanctity of their free time. The way this bill works as a mechanism is it doesn't even ban the drug testing. What it does is you still have to take the five-panel test, or whatever the standard test is that we are taking these days, I believe it, it's the five-panel test, and of that five-panel test, they test for various things, cannabis, meth, cocaine, all those other drugs. This bill, all it does is it directs people to disregard the cannabis test, disregard the cannabis test in regards to pre-employment decisions. That cannabis test should not be a disqualifier for whether or not you get a job. I absolutely, 100% support anybody fired immediately for doing unprofessional things and consuming irresponsibly on the job. But this is strictly employment protections for those who would practice in the sanctity and the privacy of their home, exercising their God-given freedom to do what they want on their free time, and nobody should get to mandate. I hope that answers your question, ma'am.
Thank you.
Vice Speaker? If I could just, no, I want to know specifically, right now, government of Guam pursuant to executive order is going to test. What does it say? Maintain a drug and, wait, they prohibit the use of marijuana, and drug testing will continue to include testing for marijuana use. So do you intend that this policy will have to be changed after passage of the bill? Or will, not even the intent, but will this policy change? It seems to me, if you're trying to say, "It's legal to use it before you come to work, and the government of Guam tests you," they're going to find it. So, what is your bill saying? That they cannot any longer enforce this drug testing by the government of Guam?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to yield, Senator Parkinson?
Yes, ma'am. You know, I am not a lawyer, so I cannot say what the courts will decide, but that would be a question for the courts to decide. But I believe law passed by this body trumps executive order.
Speaker Trelawney?
Yes. That is exactly why I'm asking, because it seems to me that what is said in the executive order then, after passage of this law, will no longer be valid. They can no longer prohibit the use of marijuana and drug, or, and drug testing cannot continue to include testing for marijuana use, or it has to change completely to include testing only for psychoactive cannabis, right? And that's, that's different than what the government of Guam currently does, is different than what the governor was trying to be strict about. It also talks about law enforcement continue to be prohibited from consuming cannabis products. It does not say on-the-job, off-the-job. They're prohibited all the time according to this executive order, and so this bill would change that as well. If they can be tested to prove that they were not consuming while on the job, that law enforcement would then be allowed to consume?
that law enforcement would then be allowed to consume? If the sponsor read you.
Senator Parkinson, would you like to yield?
If I had my way, that's absolutely how I would go about going for this bill. That if the officers are consuming in their free time and doing it responsibly, it should be treated just like alcohol and be given the same respect towards the privacy of the individual. That being said, I recognize that with the great power this body has, there are limitations to what we can do with legislation. And I understand that in safety, in public safety-related matters and places with federal sensitivities that get federal funding and of the like, that, you know, sometimes we may have to render unto Caesar's what is Caesar's and not touch it. You know, we'll do what we can on the local level, but there are limitations to what we can do. And so that bill, I believe the bill recognizes that in the framework, within the limitations we set onto what we're exempting.
Speaker Therese?
Thank you. Thank you to the author for yielding to the question. I don't think the answers were clear, though. I don't think we have a clear answer as to what now the government of Guam is going to be able to require or not require of its hired personnel, particularly law enforcement. And even in the executive order, they use marijuana versus cannabis products.
And I apologize, ma'am, my point of information?
Point of, state your point of information, Senator Parkinson.
The bill has also been amended to exempt law enforcement officers from this bill.
Thank you. Speaker Therese, you may proceed.
Thank you. The bill distinguishes between, it says that, oh, you can continue to test. You just can't use any test results that show non-psychoactive cannabis metabolites. Or then another part, it just says cannabis metabolites without even distinguishing between psychoactive or non-psychoactive. And, you know, one instance it calls it an illicit substance, one is a controlled substance. And I just worry that we're not being tight enough on the language of this bill. For example, in Part A, it's unlawful for an employer to discriminate against hiring, termination, or any term of employment. So this is all pre-employment, hiring, and employment, and termination. The person's use of cannabis off the job. Then, that's cannabis. And then it says using screens that do not screen for non-psychoactive cannabis metabolites. I know the goal. They want to say if they are psychoactive cannabis metabolites, then you can discriminate, I guess. Then you can not hire, then you can fire, then you can penalize. But on Parts F and G, it just says, "For the purpose of drug screening in the territory of Guam, the presence of cannabis metabolites shall not be considered an illicit substance." This, I think, includes also the psychoactive cannabis metabolites as they were trying to allow screening for up in subsection A. In other words, they're inconsistent, it seems to me. F and G are inconsistent with A. And they are also inconsistent in that these are talking about, F is not clear which part of the employment process. G talks about employment-related decisions. A talks about very specifically pre-employment, drug screening, hiring, or condition of employment. And that's why I worry about when we say what the intent is versus what the actual language is going to do. So for example, D is another one. It says applicants or employees hired. That means, this does not imply to those applicants or employees hired. Anyways. If the sponsor read you, does the test, the current test, if I read your public committee report correct, the allegation is that the current test that we are using in the government of Guam, for example, is too broad and that it will give positive results for even the non-psychoactive cannabis metabolites. Is that correct?
Please proceed, Senator Parkinson.
Actually, the broadness of the problem isn't so much on what they're testing because the psychoactive and the non-psychoactive, that's just talking about THC versus CBD. CBD is the non-psychoactive, non-cannabis part of the plant. But the problem where the broadness is in, is in the timescale, is in our inability to test whether your use on the job is now. Did you come to work lit and that's why we're getting this positive test? Or did you have this positive because three months ago over Christmas break while we were with your family skiing, you smoked one in the lodge down the mountain? That's the problem, is that we do not have the technology, the ability to identify the timescale for when use happened. And that leads to unjust situations where people are let go and careers are affected because we can't tell the difference of whether they smoked this morning or they smoked three months ago.
So the sponsor's saying then that this technology is not available to really accomplish the intent of the bill without potentially allowing those who are impaired to be working. That's the issue, I guess. If the technology is not available, or it's not available on Guam, or it's not available on Guam for the same cost, and even the government of Guam is not going to be able to adequately test these things using some other, you know, potentially discoverable technique. That's the issue, I guess. It's that then they are prohibited from saying you are impaired. They have no test to use, they have no standard as to what's the level of THC that we will allow, we will not allow on these tests, or anything like that. And then it becomes, I don't know, to me problematic, not very clear. And there are many instances where they, I think, I think way beyond even the list that we've made of exemptions to this bill, like GWA, GWA, and legal--
Point of information, ma'am?
--personnel, that they should not be exempt.
Speaker, one moment, please. Senator Parkinson, I will allow your point of information at this time.
Yes. Though there is no technology to test for whether you used this morning or two or three months ago, we still rely on behavior to see if you're inebriated. So, you know, it's not like we're just completely ignoring it. We use behavioral cues to see if people are coming in impaired. So there's not nothing.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Speaker, you still have the floor. You may proceed. You still have several minutes left.
Thank you. Behavioral clues has been problematic, for example, in impaired driving, trying to prosecute impaired driving. You know, and these tests have been developed for our ease in really making that distinguish, to distinguish between impaired and non-impaired by some legal standard. And that's really just my concern. It's like, we need to establish a legal standard, we need to have a test for it so that it's not a subjective thing. Or we will have the GFT in here saying that they're just being completely subjective. Some are being released, some are not. And I don't want to see that either. There was one part of GWA's testimony, so we took care of part of it by allowing that this bill does not affect them. That means they can continue to test under the current testing systems. They're going to test whether you have any kind of cannabis metabolites and they can discriminate based on that. Or they can say you're potentially impaired and you're out. That's, but they also brought up something else in their testimony about long-term effects of, I think it's marijuana use, cannabis, they say cannabis use. The terms again, according to the bill and according to the public committee report, we should distinguish between the word cannabis and the word marijuana, between cannabis in general and THC levels. But they interchange throughout this bill. That's why for me, it's a little confusing. But GWA talks about the long-term effects of cannabis use can lead to cognitive and psychomotor impairments that negatively impact the ability to safely perform certain job duties, even when not acutely intoxicated, which may potentially lead to accidents, injuries, or errors in water and wastewater treatment processes. So they're talking about long-term effects. So they said, this was, GWA's research shows this. So I looked it up and Harvard says almost the exact same thing, that the long-term effects of cannabis use can lead to cognitive and psychomotor impairments. So here, they're talking about safety to perform GWA duties. But I guess I'm just having a hard time distinguishing between many of the other duties that we are trusting people, duties with our children in schools, duties with, you know, workers who are in charge of children who are in need. All of, many of our government, Manamko, all, many, many of our government employees, I think, across the board. So I am concerned about lifting this EO, the executive order that the governor put down. And we, this bill doesn't address these long-term effects that GWA and Harvard point to. And so, and we will have no test for that. So you might come to work not acutely impaired because of immediate THC use. However, I don't know, according to this, it says there may be some long-term effects. Yeah, and so when we talked about some of these exemptions earlier, they said it was applying to all of the workers in those agencies, in every agency. Every worker, like at GWA, would be exempt. Even those who are not in those, you know, safety positions, things like this. And so it seems a little unfair to me that even those who are not working in positions where there are safety issues are going to be, continue to be prohibited, yet we are going, I don't know, it's going to be treated differently, I guess. So just, thank you. Just not clear how this extends to all those employees, volunteers, interns, and the different terms, hiring, pre-hiring, termination. Thank you. So I would, I don't know, I'm hoping that the sponsor will reconsider just doing another shot at this bill. Sajid Smasi?
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Burnett, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, madam. Anytime this subject of cannabis comes up, I always think of two very, very good friends that I had that are no longer with us today. One of them is De Fonticello Vinnie Paredo of Georgia. My friend Vince was brutally murdered in his own home because everybody knew he grew the good strains. And he was murdered because people who couldn't do it themselves wanted to get that. And he's no longer with us. My late party, Casey Savage K. Conception, who was the inspiration for the Compassionate Medical Cannabis Act that was introduced by our vice speaker, better known by his music name of Savage K., he was the son also of the late Casey Magic Man Conception, who was a famous guitar player with Radiance and just a really great staple, who also passed. But my party Savage K., we worked together at KUAM. He started coming to work and complaining about back pain. And I went to the doctor and they couldn't figure it out and went to another doctor. They said it was cancer. And so, as many of our people, you see it, even people who opt to stay here, some even who leave island for better medical care. He went to, I think, Georgia, but he wasn't able to get registered and receive all the medical care that he needed for his treatment. So he ended up going to Washington State. And he would call me every few months. And the last time he called me, he shared with me that he just wanted to come home. But he couldn't come home because he wasn't a pill guy. You know what I mean? He didn't like taking the medications that were traditionally prescribed for cancer, chemotherapy, the pain, the appetite loss associated with it. So he really championed the use of medicinal cannabis. And in Washington, he was able to avail of oils and tinctures and other methods of consuming the cannabis to aid him. He was in a lot of pain. And the last time I talked to him, he said, "I just want to come home." And, but I can't because I don't have the medicine. It's not okay for me to use the medicine I need. And he did eventually come home, but it was too late. So anytime we talk about cannabis, I always think of my two friends. And I think of, first, when we legalized medicinal cannabis and Guam was ahead of the curve on that, right? We were, we actually did it a lot earlier than a lot of other jurisdictions. And then we legalized cannabis for responsible adult use. And that kind of superseded a lot of the issues that we were having with getting the medicinal cannabis stood up. And like many people on this island, and probably even in this body, I supported the legalization of responsible adult use of cannabis. Because as you may recall, it wasn't just the argument, as simple as it is, that, you know, some people prefer to drink, as someone had said earlier, a six-pack. Some prefer a glass of wine, some roll up a joint, right? And so it wasn't just on that argument, I think a lot of people supported it. There were also other arguments presented as, you know, reasons for us to support it. One of, obviously, the economic argument, right? That we were going to stand up a whole industry based around a green economy. As I think one of the proponents, early proponents of this had used that phrase. But like so much our government undertakes and celebrates, it almost reminds me of that mission accomplished a little bit too early. Here we are, four years later, and responsible adult use cannabis is not stood up in a meaningful way. In fact, I would say that we half-assed it. We failed it. We failed. And we're in a position where we legalized it. The debate on whether or not cannabis should be legal is over. But like many things, in accepting the legalization of cannabis, we've had to accept the good and the bad that comes with it. While there are many people who use cannabis responsibly, those aren't the people that you read about in the news. Those aren't the people that you read about in the medical examiner's report, which said that a vast majority of our traffic fatalities on this island involve people who are, not just on alcohol, not just on meth, but also on cannabis. And of course cannabis is addictive. You know, I put myself in the middle. I'm not a reefer madness and I'm not, it's the answer to everything. But it's the first page, Google, guys. The cannabis being consumed today, that's not your Uncle Greg's joint from back in the day. It's not. I mean, we're talking about concentrates, dabs, vapes, gummies. I mean, once it became something that you profit off of, that's where man and his greed in many ways entered the equation and really made it more dangerous than it ever was, right? I mean, we never read about the people going to the hospital until we started seeing cannabis legalized and all these different high-concentrate ways to use it were released to the public. And it's frustrating because, like I said, you don't read about the responsible users. But there are those who abuse it because it is addictive. And also because, like I said, the cannabis of today is-- the cannabis of today is many, many times much stronger. And there's an availability of so many different types of products that, you know, it behooves us to respect that, really. And this is another part that we left behind. It's like the previous speaker had said, you know, we passed this, and then we didn't think about, oh, well, what if you're going to get a job, right? What if you, what if you smoke weed and you go to apply for a job and you're positive for weed, negative for everything else, you can't get hired, right? But I just, I'm not too comfortable treating, if we're saying, and the argument is because of the testing, the lack of technology, that you could take a test right now and it could be positive, but there's no way to tell if you smoked three months ago or three minutes ago. And, you know, that being said, I don't know if we should treat every positive result as if they smoked three months ago versus, you know, just a few minutes ago. And there is technology out there. I was reading, I know Senator Tiede, we had mentioned this, there is a test that's relatively new, but it is being offered to different groups in the US. And this is a test that tests like active THC molecules or something. So if you, it's like a breathalyzer, basically. So if you take it, allegedly, I guess they can tell if you used cannabis on the, on any time and with a certain number of hours. But I couldn't find out, yeah, Senator Tiede has more information. But, you know, there isn't a lot of information out there. And it does seem like this particular test is really expensive, right? Because the technology is new. And I know also that the private sector had mentioned some concerns with this. And, you know, previous speaker had said something, and it kind of stuck in my mind about this being one of the things that we didn't consider when we legalized cannabis for responsible adult use. And I think the words used were, take a stab at it. And I just think that something as meaningful as this, it requires us to do a little more than, than take a stab at it. I think we have to be almost surgically precise in how we determine who is exempt and who is not. And I would just say, if I was someone who was going to apply for a job and I read this bill, it's not clear whether or not I'm someone who's going to get a pass or I'm someone who's going to get tested. And so I'm not sure if we're able to address this on the floor here. I'm not going to go as far as saying, because I know that, I'm just going to assume that the measure has the votes to pass. But I just also want to caution, I don't know if this is something, because they've done it in a few states, but I'm just not sure if it's something we need to be more precise about. So I was just reading one section, and I know that it was kind of covered with speakers' questions, but it says, "No employer shall rely on the presence of cannabis metabolites in a drug screening result for any employment-related decision affecting an existing employee or applicant." And so I just don't know, when I read that section, if I'm working for a business and I wrecked the company car, right? And let's say I get tested and it's positive for cannabis and nothing else, it kind of sounds like I can't be fired for that. But again, I'm not sure. I'm just taking a stab at it, guessing wildly. So, yeah, it's, it is something to behold to live in this era where a lot of people, cannabis advocates, back in the day, never thought we would live on an island where cannabis was response, or legal for responsible use. But like I said, it comes with the good and it comes with the bad. And let me tell you a little story about that. So last year, I know you guys remember, there was a couple of students at Untala Middle School who they said were vaping, they were hitting weed vapes, and these kids got sick. And people were talking about it, the accessibility and all that. And so I did a little bit of research, and I found out that even though cannabis is illegal for responsible adult use on Guam, you can't really sell it legally because we haven't fulfilled the lab requirement and just a couple of other things, I believe. But what is being sold are these synthetic cannabis delta, what is it? Delta 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, whatever. But that's what those kids were hitting. They were hitting the delta 9, delta, whatever it is. And so I actually called the chief of police about it. And I said, hey, chief, you know, I don't know if you guys know this, I think it's a gray area because there's a couple of different deltas. There's one that's not legal, and then there's one that is. It's almost like a spice. Every time they make a determination about this is illegal, they change one molecule and then they get through that loophole. So these kids were puffing that delta stuff. And so I called the chief and I said, you know, I know we legalized cannabis, but I'm not just, I'm not sure where this falls in. And, you know, kind of the answer that I got was, almost politically, since we legalized cannabis, we're not going to be going into these vape shops and, you know, shaking them down for whatever they're selling that's outside of what is allowed or what is even documented or proven to be safe or unsafe. And that's something that we did when we legalized cannabis for adult use, is we opened the door for all these other things. And so always want to promote responsibility and responsible use and keeping it out of the reach of the kids. So I just think that that is something that, where we should have gone into these shops and said, hey, this is not what we legalize, or, you know, this is not what passes muster in our territory and taking that stuff off the shelf. But we didn't, simply because we don't want to take the political damage, right? Because we already legalized cannabis. And so if we legalize cannabis, why would we spend all this time and energy going after these synthetic THC products? Well, I would just say because they are not safe mostly, they're not regulated. And so I too am listening to the debate and discussion here on the bill. And I did, I did have a question. I know that Senator Tiede, we had amended the bill, and she had amended it to include law enforcement, firefighters, emergency responders, other positions where public safety is concerned, medical professionals involved in patient care. And then it says, public transportation operators. And since the bill will affect the private sector hiring, I would just want to, and maybe I could do this without a piece of paper, but maybe just strike public transportation operators so that we include all transportation operators, which are then under the purview of Department of Transportation. I just think it's, you know, it's, the thing with this bill is cast too wide a net or cast too narrow a net. So I think the answer is compromise somewhere in the middle. And so I hope I could get the support of my colleagues on just that simple strike through, if everyone's okay with that. And it would just be to amend line, lines 14, page 2, Section C, and it would be after, involved in patient care and strike through a public transportation, and then it would just be transportation operators. Take a stab at it, right, right on. Thank you. Thank you. Was any, was there any?
On that amendment, is there an objection to not having it in writing, to delete the word "public" before "transportation"? Signal objection will proceed. So the amendment is to delete the word "public" in front of "transportation" in subsection C. Is there anyone that'd like to speak on that amendment? Senator Fisher?
Yes, if the proponent of the amendment, the amendment to the amendment would answer a question. If we strike "public" from the phrase "public transportation operators", what then is a transportation operator?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
I sure would, madam. Well, I take a public transportation operator to mean anybody who's doing public transportation, to include, you know, public garbage truck drivers, mass transit operators. So a transportation operator, I'm assuming would be, you know, a taxi cab driver, anybody who works in transportation that is not limited to the government of Guam.
Yes, thank you for that response, Madam Speaker. Would this also include, for example, a person driving a number of children to a soccer game?
Would you like the sponsor to yield? Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yeah, I guess that's open to interpretation, ma'am. If the person is transporting these kids to a soccer game and, and one of these turtle tours buses, then I would probably say yes. But however, I don't know how much we could regulate, for example, Senator Fisher taking a bunch of kids to the soccer game in his privately-owned vehicle.
Thank you for the answer, ma'am. I would just make an observation that we already do that in the criminal laws related to impaired driving. So I don't see that this necessarily does or does not move the ball down the field. But I would be surprised if we wanted to exempt people transporting children for private reasons from the sweep of the bill. Thank you, ma'am.
On the amendment, Senator Tiede, will you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no objections to that. We're broadening it. We're not just talking about public transportation. We're also talking about, you know, as mentioned earlier, in the, in the public, I mean, in the private sector as well. The last comment with regards to, you know, does this have to do with somebody driving some kids to the soccer field? I didn't know there was an application that was needed to drive children to a soccer field. This is about applications. People filling out applications for jobs. You're not filling out an application to bring, take children to soccer games or go get ice creams. That's kind of ridiculous. But then again, this, you know, that's, that's under something totally different. But I have no objections to striking out "public." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, on the amendment, is there anyone else? Senator Smockstein, on the amendment?
Madam Speaker, I'm just looking at the amendment. I have no problem with the amendment, but I'm just curious, who's left? It doesn't apply. Who's left? I'm just curious. No, my accountants are missing? I'm just curious, who's left? When you look at the list and we strike the "public," who's left? It should just be open to everybody and be done with it. You know, thank you.
On the amendment, is there anyone else? Senator Snickletz, on the amendment?
Yeah, I can't, I'm, I'm, thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I just, I just want to read this. There's a section here, B, "Nothing in this act permits an employee to possess, to be impaired by, or to use cannabis on the job, or affect the rights or obligation of an employer to maintain a drug-free, drug- and alcohol-free workplace, or any other rights or obligations an employer specified by federal law or regulations." We keep adding the types of people, assuming that they're going to be impaired on the work. There's already a remedy for that. This is about the process of employment, when you apply for a job. Isn't, it's, there are remedies, there are repercussions if anybody were to appear on the job inebriated, intoxicated. Adding more people to this, it's, I oppose the first amendment, the first amendment. I have to oppose this one as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on the amendment? On the amendment?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Are we voting on the, or considering the amendment as amended by Senator Barnett's?
No, the vice speaker's amendment is amended earlier by Senators Tiede, then by Senator Parkinson. That passed, so that, we're now just on that line, public transportation. So on this amendment, is there anyone else that'd like to be recognized? If not, the sponsor may close. Oh, sorry, Senator Perez, on the amendment?
Just a question, because if public transport, if the word "public" is not struck through, does this create a constitutional issue if we're just targeting certain parts of employers? I don't know if that's a legal question?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
I will, ma'am. I just take it to me, I don't know if we could want to strike out "public" and put all transportation operators, that would solve it. But I think by doing that, it's implied that anybody who's operating transportation, that's okay.
Senator Perez, you have the floor. All right. On the amendment. You have a point of order, Senator?
Yes, ma'am, I withdraw my objection.
Thank you. Senator Barnett, you may close on the amendment. Hardened? Senator Barnett, you may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You strike the word "public."
Yeah, that's it. Thank, thank my colleagues for their support. And I did want to remark on Senator Smockstein's comment of who's left. And that's exactly what I mean. I can't, again, look at this bill and decide whether or not I'm exempted. And there's even a section in here that it says, "The use of the word 'employer' in this act includes any individual partnership, association, corporation, business, trust, legal representative, government entity, or instrumentality, or any organized group of persons acting directly or indirectly in the interest of an employer in relation to an employee, but shall not include the United States government or employers engaged in contracts with the federal government." So right away, when I read that, I just thought of all the agencies. And I don't know the legal definition of grants or other services where we are beholden or otherwise supervised by the federal government, if that includes, you know, for example, the Guam Department of Education, or the Department of Public Health and Social Services. So again, I just thank my colleagues for their support of the amendment. And I just also wanted to lodge that concern, if I could, Madam Speaker. Sido Smasi.
On the amendment, is there an objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand on the amendment. Amendment fails. Wait, I'm sorry. Can we just count that one more time? I think I see hands coming up now. On the amendment, raise your hand. Six, amendment fails. All right, on the bill, Senator Barnett, you're still recognized on the bill. All right, on the bill, is there anyone else that'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill. Senator Parkinson?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. During the public hearing for Bill 6-37, our second public hearing, background in this bill is that we've actually been developing this bill for over a year and a half. And the bill has had two public hearings. Not one, but two public hearings. We gave ample time for this bill to breathe so we could watch these concepts play out in other jurisdictions and see what happens. We based our laws off of state laws that are currently working now, based it off California. And the laws work. So what we are taking a stab at here is not new ground. Others have done it before. What we are taking a stab at is going to bat for our people of Guam. The individuals. This is not about telling businesses what they can or cannot do. This is about giving the individuals the protections that come with freedom. Freedom has two components. There's the freedom to do something, but there's also freedom from. We gave the people of Guam the freedom to take part in this cannabis industry. of Guam the freedom to take part in this cannabis industry, but we did not give them the freedom from employment discrimination, from being looked down on, from being denigrated as being the underbelly of society. One of my colleagues said that cannabis users steal from their community, steal from their family, and I reject that framing. I absolutely reject that framing. And I, I challenge all of my colleagues to go to some of these cannabis social events. I know they got one going on this week, you know, meet these people, see that they're real human beings, and they deserve the dignity of being treated with respect, courtesy, kindness, and not be barred from gainful employment because of what they choose to do in their free time. Like, I get cannabis is not for everybody. Some people are against it, and I get that. But the nature of the law is cannabis has been passed, and whether we agree with it or not, we need to deal with the world, with the reality in front of us. And the legalization of cannabis has led to the dilemmas that my good friend Senator Duñez had mentioned regarding questions that it put to us that we have not answered and we have let follow. So I am going to take a stand and say that we should not be barring people from gainful employment. At the second public hearing, Attorney Mike Pangolin for the Society of Human Resource Managers said during the public hearing, "I think that the intent of this bill is in line with what we do. We try to prevent discrimination. The intent is actually very commendable, because if you identify a criteria or a characteristic or a quality that an employee has, or an activity the employee engages in that has nothing to do with their employment, then you really shouldn't take action on that basis. Making and passing a law that protects that freedom is actually something that I think is very important to do." Furthermore, Robert Koss from the GFT also expressed his support, saying, "Senator, what you said when you introduced this bill, GFT is fully in support of those words. Here, somebody could have a beer three weeks ago and not fear losing their job, but smoke a marijuana cigarette three weeks ago at home, and you lose your job. Not just lose your job, but good luck ever getting another in the government of Guam, because see, you seem to get blackballed or blacklisted for that. This is something that I fight often, and I was how happy to see the legislature introduce legislation that would address this problem. This bill is a plea for justice. This bill is a demand for fairness. We have the power to end the discrimination against responsible cannabis, cannabis users, to protect our community from real threats, the threat of meth. That's what's really giving us problems in our community, not cannabis. That's not, that's what we read about in our papers. That's what makes us not feel safe. And to associate responsible cannabis users with the meth problem, does it the service, does it the service to that problem and its complexities? I have a amendment I introduced on page three to add to the bill to read Section I. This act shall only apply to pre-employment drug testing at the request of my good friend from Epan. And I'd like to discuss this amendment.
Please, please proceed.
All right, just short and sweet. After, you know, the very vigorous discussion we've had on this bill, my good friend Senator Fisher suggested that we clarify in the language that this applies to pre-employment drug testing, and, you know, not for any post-accident testing or any such thing like that. This is protections for pre-employment drug testing. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
On the amendment, to add the, the line, a new subsection I. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author for the clarification and being able to put "I." However, subsection G still exists. "No employee shall rely on the presence of cannabis metabolites in a drug screening result for any employment-related decision affecting an existing employee or applicant." I know, I think I know what he's saying, what he wants to try to do here. For clarification, can I ask for a 30-second recess so I can talk to him?
Thirty, one-minute recess. Senator Blas, you have the floor. Senator Parkinson, you were doing an amendment? But you had the floor, Senator. All right, Senator Parkinson?
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd also like to amend the language under section G, line two, and just strike out the, the line, "existing employee or." So it would just be for applicant, to better reflect that this is for pre-employment drug testing protection.
All right, we'll take them one at a time, though. So subsection I, we're still on that amendment to add a new subsection I. Anyone want to speak on that amendment?
At this time, I'd like to withdraw the current amendment for amending to add Section I.
All right, so is there any objection to withdrawal of the amendment regarding subsection I? Any objection? Seeing none, that is withdrawn. So we're, Senator Parkinson, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
I'm closing, yeah.
And at this time, I'd like to amend number G on line two and just strike "existing employee," just to better reflect that this is pre-employment drug testing protections.
So it would end with the word "affecting"?
Decision "affecting an applicant."
Oh.
The new line would be "no employee shall rely on the presence of cannabis metabolites in a drug screening result for any employment-related decision affecting an applicant."
All right. Is there an objection to this amendment not being in writing? See, no objection. We'll proceed without it being written. Clerks, you have the amendment? All right. So the amendment is to delete the words "existing employee" in line G, subsection G. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this amendment? Senator Taitegui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, it was, um, when I was looking at the legislation and this amendment that was coming up earlier, it was contradictory. So I made the recommendation of taking out "existing employee" so that this amendment is not contradictory, and I thank the author of the amendment for doing that and making that change. So I stand in full support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I mean, the proposed amendment does eliminate some of the confusion with this bill, but I mean, on the very first page here, Sections 12206A. "It's unlawful for an employee to discriminate against a person in hiring, termination, or any term of condition of employment or otherwise penalizing a person if the discrimination is based upon the following." You can only be terminated if you're hired in the first place. So I just wanted to ask the author of this bill, because we're bouncing back and forth here, what was the intent there at the very beginning on page one on this section?
The sponsor yield.
Yes, ma'am. The intent is the same as always has been, is to protect individuals when they're practicing the use of cannabis responsibly in their free time. The amendment that we just made was to recognize that we are not trying to ban testing if there's an incident on the job, and hence the amendment and the discussion with some of my colleagues across the aisle. But the intent is the same. It's protections for employees in their free and personal time to not be discriminated against in the workplace.
Well, I appreciate my colleague for responding. I'm still confused, because, again, in order to be terminated, I assume you have to be hired, and I, he says one thing, the language tells me another, and that's where the confusion for me exists, Madam Speaker. I mean, if people would want to do whatever they're in their few time, as long as it's legal, they're not harming anybody, is fine. But I think we've established in the debate today that there's no way of testing that. There's no way of testing whether cannabis is in your system for 30 days, or one hour, or 30 seconds right now. At least, I'm not aware of it. And if it exists, it certainly or 30 seconds right now. At least, I'm not aware of it. And if it exists, it certainly might be going through the testing process, but it's not an established standard of testing that exists. If this was the case, then it would not be a big deal. But because we can't determine that, we're just saying, okay, then, we're just... It's okay to, you know, have it in your system when you're being tested for employment, even though if you had five applicants... Maybe I need to ask the sponsor. If there are five applicants for a job position, one tests positive for cannabis and that individual doesn't get selected, with the others that don't, and only one out of the five gets selected, four don't, one has cannabis in their system, what? Does that give that individual an ability to sue the employer? To sue the government of Guam? To sue the people of Guam? Even though there may be other factors as to why that individual was not qualified in the first place? Does this elevate it up so that that's a reason to sue the government? We ask for equity, but yet sometimes we want certain things to be superior to others. And I still don't think this clarifies the issue, because we're really trying to protect the ability to be on cannabis, have it in your system, even though there's no way of determining how, when, or why. And say, we don't want to discriminate in hiring, but we also don't want to discriminate if you're employed. We use the word discrimination with such ease, as if, you know, this is supposed to make sense here. And then we put all these exemptions, which we're not even sure what falls into what? I mean, teachers get to come to school and have cannabis in their system? Do we determine are they... Is it still active, inactive? Are they stoned, not stoned? We don't know? That's the challenge here that I have in looking at this bill, because this is not clear-cut. Adding this amendment is not clear-cut, when we have this language in other sections like termination. Doesn't make sense to me. But we want to create that impression, this is just... This is what the people of Guam want. I really don't know that this is what the people of Guam want, and every time it's convenient, we'll fall back to medical-related issues, which I have no problem for. I voted for it, Madam Speaker. But we can't use that and say, oh, that justifies, you know, the social side of this, especially when you're involved in actually having to manage an operation and wanting to ensure that the people that are working in that operation are functioning, and they're clear in their mind and their body in performing jobs, especially jobs that have serious consequences to health and welfare themselves and the people they work with. When you have that burden, and I don't know why we want to burden employers, our people here with more to have to worry about, more liability that this language would open up, because I'm going to ask the author, does this open up the ability now? If I was tested positive for cannabis, I'm one of five applicants, and I didn't get the job, that could be a basis under which I'd go back and sue that employer. So I think we need to seriously think about this. If there was a way to test for it and say, hey, yeah, did it over the weekend, three weeks ago, no big deal, cool. But that's not where we're at here. That's not where we're at. So I just don't think we just pat ourselves on the back and think, oh, we resolved the issue, let's move on, because the people of Guam want recreational cannabis, and I didn't hear the people of Guam vote on it. I didn't hear this legislature, several legislatures ago, they decided, what, we got medical cannabis, let's just slip this right on in. And just to clarify earlier, Madam Speaker, I never said cannabis, people on cannabis are, you know, taking from their facet drug... People that are addicted are. And some might say, oh, you can smoke it once and no problem, you'll never be addicted, you're not addicted. Is that really... I don't know that that's the case. I can't just come up here and say, I'm the authority, and yeah, I did it once. I don't really need it. I'm just, you know, testing it out, trying it out. I think we need to be clear on what we're doing here and act like this is so acceptable. I don't think a lot of people out there are so acceptable of this, with the consequences that they're dealing with. And the fact we say, oh, there's no impact, there's no medical evidence of any impact, long-term or otherwise. Because, you know, it's okay, we're just... Why not? Guys, going with the flow. So I'm sorry, but when I see these things in the bill that are inconsistent, it just... It's not clear to me. And so I raise that concern, because we're saying a person in hiring and termination. So that's not what the intent of this bill was when it was originally put in place. So that's my point to relay with regards to these amendments. I don't think it resolves the issue of the contradictions that are in this bill.
On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment to subsection G? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. All right. Okay, so as a reminder, the amendment is in subsection G on page 3 of the bill, to remove the words "existing employee." It will then read, "No employer shall rely on the presence of cannabis metabolites in a drug screening result for any employment-related decision affecting an applicant." Is there an objection to this amendment? There's... Is there an objection? No objection? Amendment passes. Senator Parkinson, you're still recognized on closing on the bill.
Thank you, ma'am. On page 1, line 11, I would also like to strike out "termination", just to make it more consistent that this is in regards to pre-employment protections.
Could you please restate?
I would like to strike out the word "termination" on page 1, line 11, at the request of some of my colleagues to clarify the intent.
All right, is there an objection to this amendment going forward without it being in writing? If not, we'll proceed, strike the word "termination" on the bill, Senator Parkinson? I mean, on the amendment, Senator Parkinson?
I'll wave my close, ma'am.
All right, is there anyone who'd like to speak on this amendment, to strike the word "termination"? On the amendment... Anyone like to speak? If not, he's waving closing. Is there any objection to striking the word "termination"? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. Senator Parkinson, you're still recognized on closing.
Okay, and I would also like to have them... I would like for the body to... I would like to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Senator Barnett's amendment to strike the public in public transportation.
There's a motion to reconsider. On that motion to reconsider, before we actually reconsider it, all in favor? He'd like to reconsider an amendment by Senator Barnett to strike the word "public" on transportation. All right, is there an objection to reconsidering? Seeing no objection, we will reconsider. The amendment was to strike the word "public" before the word "transportation", in the language that was passed earlier. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on that amendment? If not... Is there any objection to the amendment to strike the word "public" before "transportation"? Any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Amendment passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we consider this bill going forward, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their collaboration in really sharpening the effectiveness at which this law could be deployed with the public for better equity and justice. One of the things that has been apparent to me throughout this discussion is that we must recognize and bridge this generational divide and misunderstanding we have regarding cannabis. We must recognize the shifting perspectives across generations regarding cannabis use. For those in my generation and younger, cannabis has been legal in various states and on Guam for some time, and it does not carry the same stigma it once did. Our younger constituents view cannabis similarly to alcohol, something that should be regulated but not criminalized. Voting for this bill demonstrates our responsiveness to the will of the people and those we serve. It is imperative that we align our laws with the evolving views of our society, who see cannabis as a legitimate and manageable substance. According to the report by the United Nations, 18% of the population of Guam use cannabis. That's about 30,000 people. This legislation helps ensure that those 30,000 can be contributing members of society, employed, and productive. And I know we are all deeply concerned about the safety and well-being of our communities. The primary threat to public safety in our homes is not cannabis, but rather the rampant use of meth. Meth leads to theft, assault, and other serious crimes that endanger our citizens. Cannabis, on the other hand, does not contribute to such criminal behavior. To be frank, cannabis users are only a danger to a bag of chips. By destigmatizing cannabis use, we can better allocate our resources and attention to combating the real scourge of our society, meth and the rising threat of fentanyl. This bill allows us to focus our efforts on those more pressing dangers, ensuring a safer environment for all of our residents of Guam, and a more... Hello, hello, Tess, Tess, Tess? Apologies to the people of Guam for that technical difficulty. However, I want to thank all my colleagues for their contributions to this discussion. What I'm ultimately aiming for is fairness. We want to be fair to the people, that we legalize this and told them that this is something that you could take part in, that our community is going to be part of, and then penalize them in one of the most damaging ways we can, through their employment. You take away a man's ability to provide for themselves, to provide for their families, you kill people that way. That's where you get real despair. And because I think about the tragedy of people from previous generations who had their life completely upended by this, that I consider myself fortunate that I live in an era that not only can I be a cannabis activist, I could be proud of it and sing it from the hilltops, and know that I will be able to provide for my family, and that I'll be able to survive and thrive, and not just live on subsistence job because all of my upward mobility has been cut off. The American dream is upward mobility by anybody. If you work hard, and you have merit, and you do a good job, anybody comply. That is the promise of America. And it just seems so small that we would gatekeep opportunity to the future on what we do in our free time. It's easy for people that don't use it to say, if you want the job, now you just don't use. But we don't say that for anything else. We don't say, like, hey, if you drink that caffeine, we're not going to let you have anything higher than a retail job, or we don't say... We don't gate people by what they do in their free time, as long as their performance meets the standard, meets the requirements. And if they do that, what they do in their free time should be their free time. I do not want a government so big and so powerful that it could dictate to me what I do in the privacy of my home. And if we could move that ball forward just a little bit in individual protections with cannabis, then we push it forward, and we pass that baton into the future. And I understand that, you know, this bill may not be perfect. No bill that comes out of this chamber is ever perfect. But we do the best we can, we do the best we can with a clear heart and open eyes, and with a little bit of teamwork, we could make it better. We've seen it, that even with this bill, with collaborations from Democrats and Republicans, we made it a better version. Is it perfect? It's still not perfect. Nothing will ever be perfect. But we always strive towards that perfection, and to that end, I commend and thank my colleagues. And for one more time, I ask all my colleagues to please support bill number 6-37, not so that we could tell businesses what to do, or stamp our feet around on cannabis or that, but to protect the rights of individuals who might not necessarily have the means or ability to protect themselves. And with that, I yield the rest of my time, and I thank all my colleagues. And that, I would like to move bill 6-37 to the third reading for voting.
On that motion to place bill number 6, as substituted and further amended by the committee, and further amended on the floor to the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We're pursuing on second reading. We're now on bill number 14-37COR. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
At this time, ma'am, I would like to, notwithstanding House rules, substitute bill... This bill with bill 260, just switch their places.
Clerk does not have a copy of that. We're going to take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. All right, I misunderstood that motion. The motion is not to substitute the bill 14, it's to move items on our agenda?
Yes, ma'am, just to switch the agenda item.
Notwithstanding the rules, there's a motion to switch the agenda. Is there an objection? There's an objection?
May I, Madam?
The bill is... The bill is a...
Just a minute.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
May I, Madam Speaker? You know, I'm... You know, we have this agenda put in place so that each of us can study each bill as they go down. I don't know if anyone studies like I do, but I start with bill 6, and what the next one is bill 14, the next one is on, and then I put all the...
Thank you, Senator.
In order.
All right.
So now you're going to switch something.
There's an objection to the motion to reorder the agenda.
To reorder the agenda?
Well, to move bills... What's the number?
Switch it around.
To...
Bill 260, and...
Ahead of all the other bills.
Yeah, just to switch their places. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, there's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. So we're now on bill... 260, just a second.
Just a point of information. Well, I'd made the switch just because they're both cannabis-related bills.
Excuse me, sir.
My apologies, ma'am.
All right, on bill number 260 dash 37 COR, Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I'd like to recess until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow to give my colleagues an opportunity to brush up on this bill, study up on this bill.
There's a motion to recess. I wish we could have proceeded with the other bills on the agenda then, because we have a lot of bills on our agenda. Motion to recess, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we'll recess till tomorrow at... What... What was the motion? 9:00 a.m.?